Today we've got a Canadian Playful Schools Network project, Brooks Secondary School. Ms. Larkin, Ms. Hewlett, Mr. Hewlett, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we're on here, we're on here, you brought an entourage.
Okay, Ms. Becker and Mr. Clark, did I have that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'm happy to start. So we have, we brought a number of artifacts today, and some literature as well that we have, so we can show that as we go through the presentations. I'm Tiffy Larkin.
I'm Brendan Clark.
Nancy Hewlett, Natasha Becker.
And this is our team of grade eight teachers that engage in play all the time. So, just to give it a bit of information about this time last year, there was a grant that was put out through the Canadian Playful Schools Network. It was funded by LEGO, it was $2.7 million, and they were calling for grant applications from districts who met certain criteria in order... And in part of that grant application, you could apply for tech funding, crowdfunding, and there was a number of other areas that you could apply for, and with that you needed to use that funding to engage in learning through play. So, we applied for the grant and were successful in receiving that. There was four other schools in the province that received it. The rest of the funding went to schools throughout the other provinces, and we all met in Ottawa recently to showcase all of the things that we did. So, we received $5,000 to do learning through play in Brooks. And then, in addition to that, there was some release time so that we could meet with some of the other schools across the provinces and see what they were doing, and then share all of our resources in findings and gatherings. And then, we met in Ottawa for a showcase. Unfortunately, the students all didn't get to come with us, but we were able to go, and so we were gifted a...
Banner?
A banner. And then, as well, we had representatives come to Brooks just before our trip to Ottawa. So, Dr. Andrew Hargraves and his support persons from the university, Gladys, came, and we were able to give them a tour. Unfortunately, they couldn't make it before the arcade, they came after the arcade just because of timing with other districts. But we were able to give them a tour, and they were able to interview all of us and our students. And then, he gave us a book, and if anybody wants to read it, I'm happy to share. And then, yeah, we kind of went from there. So, where we're at right now, we're planning for things for the future, but as our presentation goes through, we can kind of give that a little bit more, give the lead a little bit more. Okay, so I just kind of explained this, so it was done, I'll let the teachers explain into that key slide what, how it kind of unfolded. But for right now, essentially, it was a grant. We had $5,000 on the trip to Ottawa. There's a link up there for the pleasure.ca, and that's where all the resources can be found from all of the districts across the provinces. So, there's lots of resources there for now and the future, and I will hand it over to you.
Sure, so we, we're, our, like, grand finale arcade, inviting the parents and community and other classes from other schools was in start of May, but we kind of started in September, kind of priming everybody. We got a bunch, used a bunch of money for technology. There was some micro bits, little programmable computers. We had Makey Makeys, which are programmable, which is electronics. So, we kind of had a playdate where you just got to, not a whole lot of instruction, just like station to station, figure out how this stuff works on your own, was kind of the strategy. And as well as start working in teams to kind of problem solve, which we tapped into a lot of kind of English curriculum, but in grade eight, grade nine at Brooks, we combined all our math, science, English, and socials and tried to mix them all together as much as we can, so it's a little more like middle school sometimes. And then, once we got closer to May, we started to assemble teams. They had to draft by hand their ideas. When we started putting their, in their heads, we need a playable game that includes technology that can be playable by students younger than you, all the way up to your parents. What do you think you can come up with? And then, we had a lot of kind of different iterations, a lot of like drafting and prototyping, and then we got closer to, I'll let these guys explain a little bit through their own words about how things went for the different teams, but we were kind of amazed just the variety. Like, we threw it out there, we know how many people actually been to any sort of cardboard arcade before or anything like this, or any heard of it, and there was pretty, yeah, we were just amazed how different everybody went with the thing. The last thing I'll mention before I hand it over to these guys is we also had our core competencies that we report on every year, and we always found before we started doing this kind of stuff, it was hard for students to come up with like a tangible way to relate to these core competencies. And then after we complete kind of the beginning to the finish and reflecting on these projects, we hand out core competency, and then to reflect, we can really bang them off one by one of how this stuff related to those core competencies. So, that's one of the pieces that we really dig into when we did the project. All right, anybody want to share kind of just what their project was, or what went well, what was the learning point?
Well, I made a arm wrestling machine that had a pad and a wooden plank that when you, when you won, it played sound, that, you know, you won. And I had a really fun time with my friends to make this. I feel like I learned a lot of team experience from doing it.
Do you want to share with them?
Sure.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, my, my idea originally was like a foosball table, built out of some weird type of wood thing. I don't know what that was, but, and then, well, it didn't, it didn't really work out, but... And then, then we kind of just resorted to throwing cups on the coast.
My project was supposed to be football, or foosball, but then the people in my group didn't really like that idea. So, they went for some whole different arcade machine kind of thing, but I feel like that was too difficult, and we set our minds too far, or our minds too far, and we just had trouble constructing.
Um, mine is right here.
Oh, sorry, you didn't hear me.
You kind of wake up.
Mine's right here, so me and Michael, we had a bunch of ideas, and we chose the one that we liked the best, the one that thought, that we thought we could accomplish the easiest. Um, we called it "Back and forth." Um, there's two sides, there used to be elastics, but they grew up here, so we were gonna try to fix it, but we didn't. And the object was to shoot the puck with the elastic to the other side, to the rainbow gate, and at the end of the time, whoever had the most pucks on the other side won. It worked really well. We had a bunch of lights around the outside as our technology. We had lights on our poster, and it was really fun.
And then, this is just a picture routine when we were in Ottawa. There was a video that was made. There's a full link with QR code if you'd like to see that, but there is a video link. It's a minute and 44 seconds. That was composed, if you click on here, it was from...
Top right there?
Top right, the word here.
Oh.
Yeah, so here's the video.
All right.
Great. And then, I think, just one more slide. Yeah, what did we do in Ottawa? So, this is just a picture of some of the things. There was a lot of session, learning sessions, a lot of learning and sharing, a lot of motivational speaking. We did a gallery walk, so there was two sessions. Half of the groups went one day, another half went the other, and we both took a tour and get resources and talk with people and find out all the things that they did and how it worked, and some of the do's and don'ts that we could bring back for our future planning, which was really good. We did spend some time on the second day talking within our groups about what are the next steps? So, how can we continue things like this within our province, within our networks, within our schools? And so, the first thing I think that we have established is a new team, so we'll be able to meet with them ongoing. We're looking at our PPD days and some after schools next year. And then, we're working with Mr. Hargraves to see what we could do with our ministers and applications and grants. They're in the process right now of applying for more grants, and hopefully we'll find a position for someone to keep all of our groups connected and working together.
And then kind of at the school level, we were kind of talking about next year, we're really hoping to do a kind of big expand, kind of make the project better, but also think about, sorry, ways to include other age groups as well, because we really found that inviting elementary schools was really positive, inviting parents who brought science, brought younger siblings was really positive. I mean, that was some schools who did their projects and invited, or went to seniors' homes, other places around the community, and we thought that all sounded really great. So, we're kind of twang of that, all that stuff, and created a lot of buzz around the school, I think. We know we had kind of have bouncers at the door, because it was getting really packed. We didn't tell students to go back to their classes, even though "we'll bite you later" kind of thing. So, we're kind of hoping that there's enough of buzz that the grade sevens coming in want to run with it, and we can go from there.
And we got, we got a little bit inspired by one of our schools that we partnered with over the project in Ottawa, and they, they liked our idea, so then they started doing our arcade as well, and they tied it to a water project that they were doing. So, we were thinking to take this to the next level for next year as a final project, which related back to something in the curriculum of science or social studies that we really loved, and have like a thematic game to bring in even more of those kinds of kids.
Liz, are there any questions?
I have a comment, a couple comments. One of them is related to what you just said, because so many students are looking at alternate ways of learning and what you can learn through play. I just, just listening to what you said, I see so much in physical sciences and all of that that could be a legitimate way to learn. I just love that. And the other thing I wanted to say is congratulations on having the courage to have a project beyond your needs. Even if it didn't work out, that's where the learning is, so that's nice to see.
Yeah, thank you all for helping make this happen. It's incredible, what an amazing experience. But I wanted to ask each of the students here today, two things. What was your favorite moment, and what was your most frustrating moment?
Uh, favorite moment was probably trying to build the foosball table, and, and then the, the most frustrating moment was probably like the, the gas leak or whatever happened.
We're smelling that now.
My favorite part was when we were like planning it out and using the Makey Makeys and stuff, and just exploring what they did. But my least favorite part was how my team argued.
Um, my favorite part was how satisfying it was to spray paint my box. Um, the most frustrating part would probably be the elastics. They were super hard to get in and attach and make sure they don't like snap as we were playing today.
Uh, my favorite moment was when Mr. Clark was arm wrestling students. And, but my least favorite part was also the sewage smell.
Well, thank you, that's very, very good work. It reminds me a lot of Destination Imagination projects and all of the directions you could go. So, thank you so much for sharing this with us today. And give us an invite next time, I'd love to stop by.
That's so lovely.
Thank you. Okay, so, top act to follow. We've got some school growth plan presentations next. School administrators, are you just doing it in unison? What's happening?
All at once.
We're doing, they each have a video, and then after the video, there's questions for each of them. Grand P is up, Pi is first, so they'd be like, Steve, okay?
When I go, what happens here? I think my edge opened a bit over there.
So, just go to YouTube.
While we're troubleshooting the tech over here, I just wanted to point out this ad spread that the Peak did last week. I don't know if anybody has had a chance to give it a look, but they did a whole section about let the kids design ads. And as I look through some of these ads, I don't know if you've seen them, clever, funny, the attention to detail, the create, the creative element. Some of this stuff is like, is just next level, and I couldn't have appreciated it more, seeing all of the students with their smiling faces and putting in the effort to help select ads. Eyes are hard, the shading, look at the artistry in some of these things. And then, on the very, or one of the last pages, the collaborative ad with QP, PRDDA, and the school district, everyone riding a rainbow through the clouds and through a school where everyone matters. The diversity reflected in their drawings in this ad is absolutely amazing. This is one of my favorites. This is exactly how I picture our MLA representing us and the work that he does for our community. So, if you haven't had a chance, have a look at the Peak spread where the kids designed ads. It's on now. Are we ready to go?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any preamble, or you just want?
Thanks, I take the line.
Just thank you for doing this. This is one of my least favorite parts of becoming a principal is then the fun of the work. I'm saying stuff, so I was really grateful that you got to do it in the video, so.
Wind!
My name is Stephanie Hall, and I am the principal of the Partners in Education, or PI program. The PI program is an online learning school from the school district forty-seven. Typical day in the life of a PI student pairs so much, because our students come from all over the province. They can be students that come to a blended class with a teacher and other students a couple of days a week, or they can be working at home. The three pillars of the PI program are flexibility, relationship, and individualization. It's really important to us that in all things, we are as flexible as we can be for our students and their families. Relationships, PI has students staying with the same teacher year after year. It's a unique online school where that happens. The individualization comes where students are able to use whatever they like to meet the learning standards of their required areas of study. So, if they have a really strong focus on the arts or a sport, then a lot of it's going to be focused around that. And then the teachers help to plan any other activities or find resources to help them meet the learning standards for the rest of their required areas of study. Our school growth plan is a process where we look at what we're currently doing. We look at our district plan, which is based on the ministry's framework for enhanced student learning. From those schools, those sets of goals, we come down to what are the ones that we feel are most important for us to work on as a school each year. Our key priorities for PI this last year were mental health of students and staff, and our objective there was to reach out to students that we thought were struggling. So, either with engagement or just being connected to the community. We had all the teachers come together and talk about strategies they've used that were successful with students who they were worried about, that they just weren't engaging. Then we put all those strategies together in a couple of different resources. One was based on communication, how to make sure you were doing communication back and forth, and the other one was just that reaching out. How can, how a student who is struggling make progress? Looking back on this past year, one of the things that I'm most proud of is that we were selected to become a provincial online learning school. You have to be approved as a provincial online learning school to take students outside of your district.
I am so excited about blended learning. I think it's the here and now. It is a thoughtful integration of face-to-face learning and online learning. It allows students the opportunity to go at their own pace. They have flexibility with the path they're taking. We can augment their online learning with different types of materials. It's essential right now. Our universities, our corporations, they all work in the same capacity. So, I think it's a great idea. It's a great opportunity for students.
Really come alongside students and meet them where they're at, and then give them choice and flexibility in the ways that they access their learning. What I've found is that when I start working with a student at the beginning of the year and look at their successes through, we can see such a transformation in their confidence and their sense of self as a learner.
Well, at PI, it's how friendly everybody is at the school, and how you can finish work at your own pace.
I've only been in PI for about a month now, but I love it.
Yeah, it's really fun. Like, when you come to school, you look, you're really excited to see your friends.
I am. I love salads.
Right, as we're chopping the mat. Back here, it's just really fun. Right now, we're doing like engineering, like blueprints. They're really nice. A person from a support zone, she always brings in a plate of snacks.
I like how we get to go swimming sometimes, and like, bring me out of my dress.
I see.
People want to have more practice. So, basically like, you want to find everybody to love you.
Did you summon the wind at the beginning?
Wind!
We had a microphone, we were trying to use my hair to cover it, so every time I would try to say, answer a question, the wind would blow it away, and you could see the microphone, so I think that was probably the second or third time that we did something about it.
I heard one of your students say, "Math is fun here." That might be something I've never heard before. Nice.
Yeah, thank you. I think they did a good job on these videos.
Oh, yeah, fantastic. Any questions for Ms. Hall? We talked about strategies for the students and trying to figure out how to address student needs. Can you tell us a little bit more about that?
Yeah, so, engagement, so we asked all of the teachers to look at their class lists and identify the kids, three to five kids that they were most worried about at the beginning of the year, and then they let us know. So, administrators knew what students they were sort of worried about, and in the August PPD days, we had put together these strategies. Everybody had worked collaboratively to come up with the strategies that you use to reach out to kids you're worried about. So, they had that, and they chose some strategies from that list to try with these kids, and then we reevaluated it in January to see if that was helping. We have one more, sort of final to see, and one of the things they said is that in being aware of those strategies for the kids they were worried about, they were kind of more top of mind for all of their kids. So, it's sort of that idea that a rising tide coats all boats sort of helped generally with all the kids.
Yeah, what was sort of emerging in, in January?
In January, that some of the kids they were really worried about, it didn't help the first strategies. We tried a new one, they found it didn't work, and some of those kids are maybe waiting to be designated, or they are, they just need to keep looking and keep trying. So, mental health, lots of insights, and lots of kids are taught this in the program.
Yeah, focusing on mental health is certainly forefront in, for everybody these days, in every sector. But thank you for that. It was amazing to watch. Any other questions for Ms. Hall?
No, I love it.
Thanks, Stephanie.
This year I added a piece to it. I added a caring kids' meter, so it's a large thermometer that's just outside my office. And when kids do a caring act, when they get a tan, and that could be cleaning up outside, it could be sharing a kind word, they're doing really well. So, I'm at 550, which is what they need for me to kiss a pig. I think we're at 460 caring kids to get, which gets us the trip to the theater. I'm so excited to kiss a pig. I am willing to do whatever it is that gets kids excited to care. My name is Matthew Hall, and I am principal at Henderson Elementary. Henderson is special in part because of its size. We're small. This year we have 123 students, six divisions, and that gives us some flexibility. So, a school growth plan is about identifying the needs within the school community, and those are a mixture of academic, social, emotional. So, they're co-developed between the staff and myself, and looking forward to what is it that we need to be a space and place for students and adults in the building to grow. So, we always have a literacy focus. That's kind of a continual thing, because we know that if students can read and write, then they can be successful in other areas of their life as well. Another part that is near to my heart is the cultural piece. It's really that sense of belonging. When I was first told that I'd be here at Henderson, I asked, "What is Henderson? Who is Henderson?" And they encapsulated this idea in the little school that cares, little school with a big heart, and engaging on that social, emotional piece, and I just started to smile, because they know that when we build the whole child, those academic pieces follow as well. Students often have a desire to be involved. They want to have a say, they want to have an engagement piece. And so, I created two separate leadership programs. We have a student council, which is made up of our grade six and seven students. It's open to all students to attend and to be part of, and their job is to meet weekly and talk about activities. What can we do to help students get excited about being here? So, the student walk-in was one that we just have an overnight activity here at the school, but then just other activities that show up, school dances and such. I wanted to involve all of our students as the student senate. So, every division provides two students to participate, so that's from K through grade seven, and once a week, we get together and we talk about the culture piece, what do we want to have? So, one of the things that came out of the school senate was our school mural project, where we're going to create a smaller mural that will be mounted so that we can represent the school from that year. One of the things I put at the beginning of the year was a suggestion box. And sometimes they're silly things, but sometimes they're meaningful. They're asking for things to do, they're asking for activities. They allow students to engage. They like, gives them a space where they can speak up. I am really proud of how the school, the community as a whole has come together, and the many activities we've been doing through food and just so many programs. I'm really proud.
I really like all the activities, like dances and track racing.
All the teachers are always so nice.
I appreciate all of the students and staff that are very nice and friendly.
These are always so kind to each other.
We always have a smile on our face.
If that all the kids need help, they'll just come and help you.
Teachers are really helpful with things like extracurricular sports teams and speech art. They really put their extra time in to help us have our caring kids' meter, and it goes up with more active kindness, considering that it's Henderson, these can help each other.
I, I just wanted to pause here. This, at the end of each of the videos, there's a land acknowledgement. But this land acknowledgement is really special. Ms. Hodgins worked with her class, and they co-created this land acknowledgement, and we just had an opportunity to go to the nation and present to the executive council, and for the students to read this. And each and every word in that, Ms. Hodgins kind of helped with some of the grammar pieces, but rather, they had conversations about Tisquatch, and the kids wanted to involve that, because that's where we are, really in, at Henderson. That's where we are. We're in Tisquatch, that's the, that place. So, it's really special that Division Four had that opportunity to create, and today when we had our National Indigenous Peoples' Day, they read that for the whole school, and we had different performances kind of tying all of those pieces in. So, thank you, teacher, pause. So, that, that's Henderson. Like I said at the beginning, literacy, we love doing every year, because it's really important, and this year we put a lot of effort and time into that building, culture and connections and activities. It's been a really good year.
Thanks, Math. I can't think of a better fit for Henderson than you right now. Who else would kiss a pig?
I, no.
Yeah. I just wanted to ask you though, you, I know that you've done a lot of work, you know, in terms of bringing people together over food, and I know that you believe wholeheartedly in that with passion, and so I kind of watched that for Henderson, what you've been up to. Can you tell the board a little bit? Can you tell the board a little bit about that?
Sure. So we were really fortunate this year as part of the family affordability grant to approach food and using that money that was available for that. So every month, we did student meals. So a lot of schools do Christmas dinner, and we did that. We did a big turkey dinner and we fed everyone. And actually, I still have kids saying like, "The turkey meal was the best." So excited. And then every month, we would do student meals, and big ones. So it was, we did a Taco Tuesday. We did Dumpling Day. We did spaghetti. So every month, we brought the school together all at once in the gym and we ate a meal. In addition to that, because we do lots, we also did community meals. So we would every other month, put on a meal and invite the whole community. And the community was kind of a loose word to that. So community is here in the Catat region, community is students and families. So we had anywhere from 50 to 90 people come out on those community nights to enjoy meals. One of them was making dumplings. So we invited some members of the Chinese community here to come and to teach people how to make dumplings. Your family that was in that community.
Sorry, you don't.
Yeah. And so families go to make the dumplings, and then we cook the dumplings, and then we ate. So that was one thing. Then we also did food boxes. Every month I'd go and I, we gave food boxes to families. So there were 13 families that would receive a box of food. And then every Friday, we did backpacks for kids. So again, I always joke, I love food. I have it everywhere we go. But when you sit down with people and you eat, I was just raised on that idea that you can't be upset when you're sitting and eating and with other people. And we really saw that in the gym and when people came. It's high spirits and people are excited and so, and I love food.
Thanks, Matt. What kind of difference or what sort of observations were you making about how it's having an impact for regular school days?
Kids would often ask what the next meal was. So kids were aware that it was coming. And following the event, there were conversations about it. So knowing that it had that positive effect because kids remembered it. Not everyone loved all the food. I have a couple of kids that are super picky eaters. But they weren't, it was never an upset piece. They were just like, "No, I'm good." And so yeah, the effect that I would say it had is just that it became a conversation piece and it became part of who they were. And kids trying things that they never had tried before, to just be present. And everyone eating at the same time. Growing up at home where that was important to us, I kind of bring that into my school, sitting down and eating together.
Thanks, Matt. Want to say a rest to the man?
I just wanna say I love the idea that you go from a sense of belonging and community that drives your work and the curriculum rather than the other way around. I think that's incredibly powerful.
Thank you. Yeah, that came up today as we kind of did our assembly, very similar to what we saw in the video with Angela. We gathered in a circle out front and we talked about that, what it means to belong and to be part. And today was drawing together everything we've learned about Indigenous peoples throughout the year. So whether that be the territorial acknowledgement of a song and I do them, but talking about the learnings that we've done and how that makes community and helps us together.
Thanks, Matt. I actually was gonna talk about that classroom project in my remarks today. No, it's okay. I'm glad that you brought it up. When I came across it on the district announcements on the website, I really love listening to it and student voices. You can really tell the passion that students brought to the project. So thank you first for that.
Thank you.
Great job, Matt.
Our students here are remarkably diverse. They're resilient and they are full of care. It's not uncommon that you'll see me walking hand in hand with kids outside, but that's just who they are. And you build relationships with the students in the most interesting of ways. My name is Jennifer Kennedy. I'm principal of Kelly Creek. What makes Kelly Creek special is that it is situated so beautifully in nature. We have this beautiful kind of like outdoor area that we take full advantage of. A school growth plan is a document, something that can live with us, but also guides our practice for the entire year. We gotta take a look at where we are as a school, what are our strengths, what are areas that we need to focus on. So this past year, we really wanted to focus on the district goal of improving literacy achievement for all our learners. Literacy is super important. So obviously, not only at Kelly Creek, but in School District 47. We're really lucky that we have a literacy team. We have an approach that is not only happening at the classroom level, but we have targeted interventions for students who need it. In addition, we have our library space, which has improved and increased dramatically over the last couple of years. We've got new books. We have a library position that I'm really excited about. And even using the library as a space to open it up to our community, to invite parents in and share the amazing resources that we have. And the second goal was looking at the school experience. So using that as an all-encompassing opportunity to look at our outdoor education program, to look at Indigenous education and how it's embedded in the school, to look at equity and diversity and all of those kind of student experiences and the overall impact on the learning communities in work at Kelly Creek. Because it exists in our school name, we are Kelly Creek Community School. We utilize a variety of different ways to kind of bring community together. One of the ways is our community association, which is diverse and helps run a variety of different programs, including our hot lunch program or our lunch program. It runs sweatshop after school, which is an opportunity for students to move their bodies and to take on something a little bit different than, say, a traditional after-school program. We ran a whole-school lunch program this year, which was really successful as well, using the student and family affordability funding. And what that looked like was a group of volunteers that came to cook lunch every Thursday for our entire school. So a really great way to really showcase to students how important they are, to bring some affordability to our families, and an opportunity for kids to break right together too. Kelly Creek Kids Who Care, which is a group of students who are making cards and sending notes to people who they think just need an opportunity to be lifted up or celebrated or show them that they matter. And then we also have students that do simple things like cleaning up around the school, taking it upon themselves to care and be stewards for the space that they occupy. So it's not uncommon that you'll see students out at lunchtime deciding to pick up some litter and just kind of take care of a place.
Do fun things. You do activities. And you do ridiculous things that are very fun.
We have two big forests and a good playground and really a nice library.
Really like times tables. That's like my favorite.
We'll make lunches for people that don't have lunch.
Sometimes they finish their lunch and they're so hungry or they forgot their lunch. And we make them food and then make sure they have their menus and then they get served.
Ms. Kennedy, I love that you acknowledged the different things that kids can do to help contribute around the school and really appreciate their uniqueness. I'm not gonna lie, I was a little worried when you said you were running a sweatshop out there.
Sweatshop. Long standing Kelly Creek tradition. Oh, yeah. No, it's fantastic.
Yeah. So how does that change sort of what goes on for students out there? The sweatshop activities?
Oh, the sweat, well, it's an after-school program.
Yeah.
But it's about the community association. So we're super fortunate because not only do we have a PAC, but we have our community association, which they basically co-support the school. And the association also takes care of our after-school program. They take care of our lunch program. Like they truly like enrich a lot of what we do at the school. So it's awesome. But it is another group of people to work with in addition to a PAC, a staff, and those sort of components. So it's awesome. They do so much for the school. We're really lucky about them.
Yeah, that shines through certainly in your video. Yeah. Well, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Kennedy?
How many students at this school?
Currently, we're at 178.
Oh, okay. That's a nice size.
It is. Yeah, eight divisions. So, yeah, it's really good. And if you haven't been to Kelly Creek, I would say probably wait until the fall if you wanna come out and see. We were lucky enough to have Brock out a couple of times because he's my trustee liaison. But we're undergoing a huge amount of facilities change there as well. We're getting some portables for the new year and some other big changes. So it's kind of an exciting time.
How do your other groups fit into the mix of things going on like that?
The other groups? Like your community association?
Yeah.
So it's, one of the fun things you get to do is help navigate change for those groups. The community association building that they're currently in, where they do the lunch program and is also our music classroom, is going to be converted to daycare, which will be that 30 months to five years daycare. So Kelly Creek will be one of the sites that will see that, which is really exciting. And then their after-school program will get more integrated into the regular school. So whether or not it's in a classroom or the library or the portable that we're trying as well. So, yeah, big changes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's really nice.
And the academic achievement obviously is a focus for everyone. But what kinds of activities do you think help support academic achievement that are unique to Kelly Creek?
I'm super lucky. Well, it's hard to say that anything is unique to anyone at elementary school because I think we are lucky that as a group, we beg and borrow and use each other's ideas. And I think as principals move through different schools too, they kind of like leave their own mark on a school and then some of those pieces stay. So what I'm really lucky with is we have our library that's open. It's actually open during Fig recess and it's open after school. So students are actually able to use those traditional recess times. I know I've been at other schools where it's like everybody's outside and that's kind of like supervision time. But we actually have those library spaces open for that during that lunch recess time and after-school time once a week. And then we're gonna, as our library position expands next year, it'll be open for multiple things. So really encouraging kids to dive into more reading, whether it's reading with community members or self-guided reading during recess. Awesome. That's it.
You can see the smile. And I get an opportunity sometimes. It's one of the best parts of my day. I sit down with a student that really wants me to listen to them read. And I'm very proud that they're able to do that and just really fills my heart. I'm Jermell Powell. I'm the chairman of the school. I'm James Thompson. She's learned through experience. And to me, that's what's important, is they get a chance to do stuff. And when that happens, that's when really learning happens. They just bring the projects forward. And I think, wow, where did this come from? It's like, this is what I really wanted to do and I'm doing it. And that's when not just learning happens, but deep learning happens. If you really wanna make improvements, you gotta look at yourself and go, where is it that we've gotta be a little bit better? I looked at the school. One of the key pieces was we really wanna make sure that we're focusing in on the health literacy, the idea of tolerance, acceptance. We really knew that that's gonna be a priority. And the other priority was making sure that kids are reading and not just reading, but reading well. And making sure that kids are being lifted up. And we're doing it not in isolation, we're doing it as a team. We've done some early assessments. And for me, I'm super proud to see the results, the growth already beyond one grade at that time and seeing students that were really struggling, minimally meeting, whatever terms you wanna use. They just weren't there. And now they're there. And when you see a kid that knows that they got it in that aha moment, you can see the smile. We look at some of the cultural pieces that have happened. They really do happen on a calendar. Every month, we have something that we get to look forward to. May Day has been going on for quite a number of years, actually. So the number one thing we do is it's an opportunity to bring the community in so they all find a way to celebrate. And in the end, no matter what happens, we're all celebrating because we're gonna end with a bit of a snack together, a meal together, and a whole day of play. Language is a really important piece to our school. And knowing that we are the French diversion school for the district, the other piece that also happens is we're the closest proximity to the nation and knowing the language here in this area. We use all three languages. So with that, I would generally in the morning, I would say chichahatche. I would say the ambidu, and I'll say wak.
The thing I'm most proud of is watching all of the children integrating the social-emotional learning. They're teaching each other, the grade sevens look after the kindergarten kids. Kindergarten children look after the grade sevens. It's wonderful. And they're using the same vocabulary. They're using the same skills. They're integrating zones regulation, super flex, the WITS program, second step. They have so many different resources that they're using and they're living it. They really become an amazing support network, like a family.
The activities that we do and the teachers are really nice.
French diversion, on top. It's the best.
The activities that we do at school, I'm proud of the people there.
I like the activities. We started a pride club we had last year. That was a really fun thing.
We made it.
Our class did haunted forest. It's basically where we put out a play in the forest out there. And it's very fun.
I'm an assistant teacher and she's done a lot for us. I'm very grateful.
Good morning.
Hi.
Hello, how are you?
I'm well. Thanks to you.
Good. Both of you did such a great job in your video, of course, but you spoke about mental health strategies. Wanna tell us a bit about the strategies you're using at JSTC?
Yeah, I think too, I think the biggest piece for us is having that language, like kids understanding how to bring themselves back to green or getting themselves regulated. Having the other piece too, that we want to drive to our surroundings, that's an induction piece that we're working towards. And giving kids a chance to, like whenever there's conflict, having a consistent way of working through it. As I shared with kids quite often, it's like, I use WITS even at home when I'm having conflicts, right? Because it's a strategy that is, wholeheartedly works. Do you wanna add anything about social-emotional learning?
The consistency is important, but also adapting. Like we're using different programs because not every program works for each child. But they're all mentoring each other within the different grades and they are working like a family. And they find their connection. They're finding their people. And you can see them in the hallways. You can see them in the classrooms. You can see it in the playground. It's really wonderful.
Yeah, I love that you included the word family and definitely building a sense of community among your peers and in your school communities matters and contributes to student success. No question. Thank you. Really well done. Any questions for Ms. Kennedy?
Yeah, I just, I love the outdoor components of the school and to really use outdoor as a source of curriculum learning is the way to go, really. I mean, you can see how engaged the kids are. You don't have to convince them to be involved.
No, exactly. And I'm gonna talk about where's my classroom, my classroom, the school, the campus is our classroom and beyond. You know, we have kids that are just coming from the beach today and whether it was Zill Club, Donrue Center the other day, or working in our own forest, on campus and off campus. So there's tons of opportunities for kids to really learn in the outdoors.
I love the idea that you're referring to as campus. That's, I love that.
Yeah, thank you.
Steve, maybe we'll go to Edschel?
Usually older people say, "Oh, kids these days." I usually don't, but I do. I interject right away because kids these days are awesome. They have complex lives, just like adults do. And if anybody doubts how great kids are, come to Edschel for a day and we'll show it. My name is Jamie Burt and I'm the principal of Edschel Elementary. What I love about Edschel is I think that it's really rich in its traditions of music, arts, sports. But probably the number one thing I think it's known for is just, it's a real strong community feel. School growth plans, it's a bit of a living document because you'll find some years that you're banging on and you're going towards the goals that you have. Other times, things come up. A couple of years ago, it was COVID, and so we had to shift. You use it as a guiding document that you're talking about, you're kind of measuring against. This year, we have three main areas of focus. The first one was around literacy. Our main goal is for all our kids to be reading at grade level. That's a main focus and probably will be a focus for a couple of years as we move forward. We're very, very fortunate. The district has thrown a lot of support to all the schools or is included in a rich reading intervention program.
Really proud of the new program we brought in. It's called the UFLY program. And it's into the primary classrooms and it's an explicit and systematic launch program. We now have lots of tools that the teachers need and we have a grid and county commons. And it's in the library. It's just remapping our library. It's amazing. There's new books and our ideas and our programs and it's really added to everyone's love of literacy.
The second was around overhead and the amount of opportunities that we can offer our students. Very fortunate to be surrounded by a nice wooded area where there's four established outdoor classrooms. It's a common land, so we can established outdoor classrooms. It's Telham and land. So we've struck up a real nice relationship with Telham. They were wonderful. It was actually their land that they let us use for our classroom purposes. We think that Edschell in the future is gonna be a go-to school for Edschell.
It's sort of like taking away the walls from the classroom and allowing us to come out here and learn in a space that's different. So it can look like a science lesson out here. It could look like walking through the forest. We are using the space to learn, but we're also learning about the space and how to be protected.
And our third one is around rebuilding community or learning about our school community. Has really taken the focus for a lot of our staff and then of course for our students and our families too.
All just the, all the people and how they're like really nice.
Couple of trails, like the outdoor forest.
I just like how at Edschell, we're always outside, our teachers and students. The chess club. We go on bike rides every Monday.
I like the basketball team and volleyball team.
I like the leadership, but we have like ten others, like the choir, the band.
I like Fun Day.
Favorite day is probably when we started building in the outdoor forest a really big trail. My favorite day is Monday because everybody just has lots of meeting new friends and learning how to track socially. It helps with your like social life.
They care for ourselves. We take care of mothers. We take care of our friends.
Thank you, Mr. Burt. I love that you touched on the importance of having to adapt and be flexible, especially when things shift and change. And certainly, COVID was one of those times. You also mentioned about seeing, envisioning an outdoor destination school at Edschell.
Well, yeah, I think everybody has mentioned it almost in their, their programs. It seems to be the way that's going. And I think particularly where we are there, I love that place because we have so many, like it's easy access to it. We're in the backfield. So that coupled with some really knowledgeable, passionate staff members makes a really good fit.
Yeah, getting outdoors, no question, makes such a big difference to everyone's life. But how did it work, making, working forward with the relationship with the nation? Did you do a lot?
We actually did some logging really in the year in the backfield and contacted us right away. Like again, with everything going on, it was a really nice bit. Asked us kind of what our plans were, what we thought. So it was almost kind of like they made some changes in their plan because of the feedback from our staff and parents. So we think that moving forward to some of the reforestation is gonna be a teaching tool for our kids. And yeah, it's been awesome there. We're out, Vegas was out twice. And yeah, it really struck up a nice relationship. Because people were kinda like, I had logging, I think, but it turned out to be awesome.
Great. Good to hear. Any comments?
I have a comment. Before the election, I was invited to a grade five class. And I have to say, the questions from those kids were more thoughtful than most of the questions I got from the adults in the community. And it speaks volumes to the quality of teaching, but also giving kids legitimate voice. I mean, they weren't shy. They knew exactly what they wanted to say. And I really appreciate that.
Yeah, some real strong staff members. But yeah, it improves that. So, yeah. Awesome.
I'm inclined to, yes. Justin's gonna go and then Shannon's gonna go. Okay. If anyone needs to leave to go.
Attend to anything.
That was fine. You're getting the live version, not the video. So, um. Great. So we have one goal this year. That is our goal to foster school environment where all students and staff are connected and that they belong. We believe that getting to that positive place, sort of getting back to that positive place, our learning and our academic goals will definitely follow. We have no reason, COVID took a big toll on the school. People weren't happy. Students had disconnected. Because the size of the school, they had to do a lot of restructuring for COVID. So kids were coming in different doors, coming at different times. And it really disengaged a lot of kids from the school. A lot of kids went to Pi and we haven't gotten a lot of those kids back. So we're working towards that. So we needed to create the most wonderful place for Brooks students to attend. So we went through three questions on that planning day last June. What was going well? What needed to improve? And what should it look like? And they filled out sticky notes and they put them around the room. You could sort of tell how the temperature of the room was because they then went around and took pictures of them all to make sure that we reported all the information. That information was collated and what came out was relationships and connection. They wanted to get back together. They wanted the kids back. They knew it was the most important time. In real estate, you like location, location, location. But for us, it's relationship and connection. So that's what we focused on. So we had a big list of things from them to do first. So we shared out who would be doing what. So there wasn't any mysteries. My office went from the back to one of the front VP offices. Tanya, if you don't know, handles a million things and is often out of the building. And staff wouldn't know where she was. And when you don't know where things are, you're filling in cognitive gaps. So she sent out a schedule. This is where I am. And people now have a much better understanding of their role. The school's cell phone policy was sent out right away. Wags to staff, parent wags, student wags, everything going out wide as we can glance, if that's what we're going to right now. We committed to being much more visible and engaging with students. We've created spaces around the school that are a bit more welcoming, again, because they can finally get back together. So we took the big plants out from the, right outside the offices and food room and replaced it with tables. We've got messages up for kids that are positive, encouraging, and then trying to take some of the mystery out of the day. So that rotating schedule's confusing. We put it up every single day on the whiteboards so they know what's coming. Attendance was a big issue. So we're tracking that transparently to staff so they know what we're doing. Practice what we preached. So we are handling things in the moment. We're visible, we're reachable, we're responding. We're in classrooms. We're four of us, three vice principals and myself. So we're getting in and around. We're not in our offices very often during the day. Access to the library, it's open before school, it's open after school. And the lunch time has changed. It's not quiet. There's a lot of activity in there. And we're hosting whole school assemblies again, which they weren't allowed to do for years. So it's been great. Communication was the biggest one. I'm just gonna say the only reason I put that up there, that picture, is because we had a chess club and kids got excited and wanted more chess things. And then we had a 3D printer. So they actually made that. So I just put that up there because that's cool. And 3D printers freaking out the class. So communication has been the biggest factor to building trust with staff, families, and kids. Not everything's been agreed upon that we've communicated out, but everybody understands why we're doing what we're doing. And this also ranges from things like the, don't use the trail up to the turf. There's maintenance work happening. And making sure everybody knows that. Respond to emails, sharing out ideas, asking for change. Student updates. When things happen, we try to let the appropriate staff members know so people aren't going wars at kid. And then they find out two weeks later, they've transferred to Pi. Parents get the P-wag, students get the student wag, and teachers receive a separate wag that's pertinent to them. And it was also the number one concern on our parent survey, but it wasn't uncomplained frustration, just the parents would like more still. So one thing that worked really well to repair relationships between teachers and teachers and teachers and students was pooling remedy, which they don't typically do at high school. That's an elementary practice. But this was the first year, they came together as a staff and said they would like to pool their remedy. So teachers are now going in on every second prep. And they have connected with other teachers to come in and support students in that class and support the teachers. So there's co-teaching. They're in the classroom supporting kids, they're supporting kids out in the hall. So it's created this connection with kids that they maybe taught two or three years ago and now they're in that math class helping. Or kids are gonna teach in the future. There's been tons of comments from kids about staff that they never knew taught that subject, but they seem to really know what they're doing. So there's lots of good conversation that's come with that. And it's really helped kids be more confident academically. And then we have some tweaks that we are doing for next year. So the support piece, which was the other thing that they wanted, staff really wanted to feel respected. And that's all staff. So we're working really hard to do that. And that includes things like on the first day with their welcome back bags that all staff get. Obviously, teachers, EAs are easy. Making sure they're for the custodians when they come in for their later shifts, later shifts. And we hit the bus drivers when they come in. So if there's treats or something that happened, we make sure we set aside for everybody that's in there. Maintenance guys, Aaron, always good to keep him happy. So we always save something for him as well. So just making sure that everyone knows that we're thinking about them when it comes to things like treats and rewards. This was a fun Lucky Ducky draw that's still happening. There's numbers on the bottom of the ducks and they get drawn every couple of weeks. And just making sure everybody's up to date and knows what's happening. So the reconnecting parents was a big thing that we heard from parents as well as staff. So we sent a survey to parents, thanks to Christie, who designed a really great survey. We didn't see who responded. She managed all that. So there's no hard feelings from us. But it was really good and really positive. And the comments, although some of them were a bit out there, you could still take something to learn from it. And we got a ton of positive feedback, which was really reassuring that we're on the right track with stuff. So inclusion, so making sure the students especially, because that's what schools are built for, are feeling included. We want to make sure that everyone finds their place. There's somewhere for them, no matter what their interest. So even though there's things that are happening, sometimes they don't know about it. So getting the word out is really important, but then also making sure it's visible, celebrating results. We're trying to do that through social media and on announcements, congratulating kids that are going and accomplishing things. Greeting kids and using their names, which is really tough in a school of eight hundred and fifty, especially going from a hundred and twenty-three. So we had our cheat books that we would use. And I would usually pick five names of kids that I don't know their name and then seek them out and find them and use their name and hope that it stuck. So we made a really, really strong effort with that. And then finding the right fit for kids. So as everyone knows before, you've had many presentations about trades and all the great things that the program happens there. Hair is growing, which is great. Well, hair grows, but for most. And then, but the program itself is growing and more and more kids want to do it. We've got a fantastic teacher that's drawing kids in. Fine arts, we had the play. And we had FARC come back, which is the Fine Arts Reach for the Top, which was fantastic. Right now, if you come into Brooks, the great hall is covered in Kid Art for Media, which is so impressive. They did such a great job. They had a showing at the art studio and now it's come back to Brooks. Academics, we've really been pushing for kids that are, have their sites maybe even on post-secondary, I'm not sure. So we did two or three tours this year where we loaded them up in the bus, they got to overnight. And tour sites to see, for some college or university, it's just kind of an idea. Or High School Musical or some movie that they've seen. So we took them there and they got tours. And it was really, really fantastic. Clubs, everything from GSA to Students for Change to Student Council, there's something for everyone to find their fit and a group and their people. Teams, sports are obvious. The obvious school teams. But we also have swimming and gymnastics and things that happen outside the timetable. And we also this year started a video game team, which I wasn't really on board with at first because it seemed like two steps back. But watching them in there, today was the semifinals. It was a lot. And it was very exciting. And I was like, okay, that's good. So it's great. And again, it's just brought that library to this lively learning commons place that's really, really neat to watch. Traditional skill builders. Lots of kids have found a fit in there and we're really happy with the learning that's happening onsite and on their place. The explore program for those kids that aren't quite ready to be in high school all the time, but they're up in the field house, or also known as the penthouse. And they come in and out. So at least they're in and out of the building and you still have them. The comm room is for kids that are in life skills. And they are so funny. And they do school-wide projects like hide a pickle. And each day, they hide a cut of a pickle and everybody finds it. And if they can't find it, they reach out to those comm kids for clues. And they love not telling them. So it's a really neat way to engage them with the school. And then flaps. So we're really expanding our online room this year. And I've been very open with it to steal our kids back from Pi. So we're mimicking a lot of Pi in that online room to get those kids back in the building, even if it's three thirty to five thirty, which will be open, and just get them back in the building comfortable. And then part of this year has been collaboration. And the staff is very much, yeah, we're meeting, but we wanna see something happen. We've done this before. So we're looking at how to improve the space. It's beautiful, but we're really crowded. And so looking at expanding our space outside of the building. It's probably, I think JT doesn't have their gazebo yet and then probably us. So we need that covered outdoor learning space.
That's a sore spot.
Yeah. So we're anticipating ours and hopefully a little bit bigger than what's been going in at elementary. But we're really looking forward to getting that space in. We've got the plans thrown up. We wanna create a weatherproof area for learning as well as for playing. For a school this size and coming from JT and Henderson putting the garden in there, it's small for a big school. So we're looking at expanding the garden beds as well. They have grandiose dreams of a greenhouse. So when you hear about the core culture program in a couple of years, you'll know that's coming. And then play. So the portals are getting, the old ones are getting taken out. We're getting the new ones put in. That laptop is now a clean slate, fresh start. And we have big plans for what to put in there. And we're meeting with Jared next week to do that. So we're grateful that it's coming together quickly. And then next year, taking that one goal and putting it into those spaces that we know we still need to work. So we want students, not just in art, but ways to see themselves reflected in the building when they walk in. They should see themselves as they come in. The student spaces, so learning, gathering inside and outside. We wanna enhance all those spaces for learning. Fun, we had a few, but things got busy and it was a big learning year for especially the four of us, first year together. So we wanna make sure we have some fun social activities for the kids and the staff. We really like to have fun. And then academic success. So we know it all comes down to grad rates. And that's what we're anticipating, an increase this year and then going forward, getting better. That's it. Wow, it's a lot. It was a lot. Yeah, no, it's good. Everyone has mentioned, you know, the importance of the sense of belonging and building community at school. And yours is different in that, you know, parents aren't necessarily involved in the equation so much anymore. I mean, we talked about how important it is to get people outside and your hopes and aspirations on that. But what's the appetite for the students who aren't so much into the core cultural activities to engage? Well, that's the nice thing. It's a, I mean, we offer a lot for being a one high school town and having a mid-level high school in that town. But we can find, okay, you don't wanna go outside, we have these opportunities for you. So we're looking at doing it as a course. If you don't want to go out there, you don't have to. But I think a lot of kids will opt to go out there at breaks, at recess, lunch, well, not recess, but at lunch because they've had those experiences at elementary. And they've had access to that garden, that green space. And then they come here and it's not there. So I think it will grow and grow and grow as kids come through. And the parent thing is funny because we had our grade seven and new student open house last night. And it was packed. And at pack meetings, we have about four or five parents, which is probably less than elementary schools have. And when I said that, they all laughed. And then I said, that's great. So I'll see you all at one or two meetings. And you can sign up on a schedule outside. So it was good. But it's true, the engagement of parents just drops. Yeah. And that's not a new problem. And it's not just post-COVID. No, no, it's pre, yeah. Yeah. But the communication piece is obviously key at that level, especially where their parents don't have a presence in the school day to day. But I can imagine that you're going to try and, you know, bring them into the fold a little bit more as you move forward and create that sense of shared ownership of student success. I think even little things like at the meet the teacher night, usually it's held in the cafeteria in the library only. And this year, everyone's scheduled in the classrooms. And we had so many parents say, I didn't even know that hall was there. I've never been down that hall. I've only been there and there. So it was really, so more of that. And the cardboard arcade and things like that, really getting parents into the building. Yeah, sure. Community gathering, treasure. Yeah. Any questions for Ms. Marshman?
Makes her wanna go back to high school. Honestly, this has nothing, there's no relationship to my experience. I think it's great. And I love the fact that you legitimize student voices and put them in the action plan. That is critically important.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, I like how purposeful you are with your cheat sheet of learning people's names. Yeah, that's actually really powerful.
It's hard when kids are like, I'm Mrs. Marshman.
Hey.
Yeah. So it's, yeah. Now when they walk by, I'm like, oh, I could name seven out of ten. Great. Okay, I could find those other kids' names. Yeah, so it's, yeah, now when they walk by, I'm like, oh, I could name seven out of ten. Great, okay, I could find those other kids' names.
You mentioned that parent survey, was that, you also mentioned Kristi helped put it together. So I can imagine that's a new engagement with parents?
Mm-hmm, I think so. I don't know if they've done one in the past. But it was, yeah, it was really good. It was just kind of putting everything out there and a bit vulnerable, but what came back was really helpful and encouraging, so it was good. I think we had eighty-three percent of parents that they're happy this year being a Brooks parent.
So good. That's wonderful. How many responded?
Two hundred and forty-five.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's great.
Thanks. So we have a really smart team at this school. And it's one of the things that we've kind of put a lot of attention and work into. If you have a team that's functioning really well, then you can move your marine agenda out. We have our bus drivers, our support staff, our teachers, our office admin staff. We also have, of course, the students are part of the team and the parents are part of the team. My name is Dr. Shannon Bean, and I am principal of Westview Elementary. A school growth plan is really important to organize the learning agenda for your school. So the superintendent and board of trustees create a strategic plan that is informed by the desires for the Ministry of Education and Childcare. We put all of those pieces together and we create our own school of goals. And basically, the questions that we ask everybody is, what are we doing well? And what are our opportunities that we have to grow to in the future? We had two key goals at this school, and the first one was literacy and literacy. We have our letter lab with our kidneys. We have our Ufly program with our early primary groups. We also have our digital assessments that we use.
I actually brought my book, Ufly Foundations. It runs as an explicit and systematic program that ensures that students have all of their foundations to become the progressive readers, and it doesn't leave any gaps. When I use this program, I can be assured that they have all the skills that they need to transfer to their reading and material that they love. For me, the circulation of high-quality reading material has been great this year. Students are seeing themselves reflected in the books they're reading and finding, and also learning about stories of their fathers.
My unique business, I'm working with numerous students on Ufly programs. It's really successful because it's very systematic and it's super consistent and routine. So that is huge energy for that student group.
Another priority that we had at our school was engagement and connections. So coming out of the pandemic, we realized and recognized right away that a lot of the parents felt really disconnected to the school because we had to. They waited outside of the school. They weren't coming into the school, and they weren't really familiar even with who their child's teacher was. So we've been really intentional about welcoming parents in and encouraging parents to come read with the kids for the first fifteen minutes speech shake. A big part of our breakfast and lunch programs. Every opportunity that we have to welcome parents into the school, parents are a really important part of a child's education.
All the teachers.
Yeah.
We learned so much stuff, kid.
That we get to do math and we get to read everything.
It came in my grades.
Yeah.
Those bits of dance.
Yeah, we got some of that. That was so fun.
We got, he'll help our teachers how big money is.
We're on a later first.
Yeah.
And we had like adventure activities and we get a chance to do fun stuff.
Yeah, so like the earlier mindset, who's up?
They show you cool stuff that you might be able to do, like tracking view. Maybe in the future you might want to do that.
So gift cards, you are a trip to school that where you're gonna go next year.
Schools good to come to because you get to learn and do good things.
I miss this too, so.
Ms. Bean, so adorable. And that little person who said they get to hang out with their big buddies, they get to do math, they get to read, and it really is about perspective.
Oh, yeah. You know, actually, we were just planning for our grade seven leaving ceremony, and a really big piece of it are the little buddies that make the little caps. And they're walking their grade sevens into the gym, and there's a real connection. Like they genuinely feel really connected to the big kids. It's a really important part of the dynamic of the school, which affects the culture really, really nicely in a really healthy way.
Yeah. Must be difficult for you to kind of work on outdoor spaces at Westview.
Well, I know, and you look around and it looks like there's a lot of space, and there is. But it's not like, you know, you have the gazebos and the gardens. It's structured differently. But we have a creative group, actually, we should, maybe I'll present to the board right now. There's a really great piece of land just in between Ocean View and Brooks that a lot of teachers would like to develop for garden space at Westview. You know, but, but we are getting creative with some of the garden space that we do have access to. And, you know, like Sam Christmas does, Christman does phenomenal work with like kids with the gardens. And, you know, today they were picking berries and they're growing tomatoes and they're gonna be making jam and making stuff. Like, we get creative and we have access to a lot of good spaces that we use to, yeah.
Yeah, the means and the sentiments that are echoed throughout every school really is food, coming together, community, outdoor spaces, connecting, sense of belonging. And I think all of these videos do a fantastic job of that, so thank you. Great job. Can I ask you a question, Kristi?
Sure.
Brooks, what happened to their video?
We opted for live. We booked a little late.
Yeah, it was, it was definitely lovely to have that sort of snapshot because, I mean, we, it's always amazing to hear from every single one of you and what you do every day, but also to capture the sentiments of the people that you surround yourselves with was captured in these videos as well. So thank you for that. What a lovely job you've done with those. The drummer, I mean, really, I would have done this, huh?
It was fun. Everyone was like cared and the videographer said that we could do like a full documentary on the district in terms of the amount of footage that we have now, so that's great as well. It's good.
We'd like a blooper video, too.
Yeah. We might have the idea of a full-on blooper, but just think about the full distribution of that one.
What is the plan on sharing them out with the community? What are we doing with the videos?
So all the principals, I sent them the live link because it just went out today live. So I'm gonna let all the principals can share on their own channels, and then we'll share through the district. And then next week, we're gonna do a roundup just on the website with all links to all of them. So I want each school to push it out themselves to their stakeholders, and then we'll combine it and do it through the district. Have a date that we have to do that.
Great, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming today and sharing your experiences through your schools with all of us. It's, we don't get the same view around this table that you get every day in the work that you do. Thank you, you're all appreciated. And I bragged to somebody that this was gonna be on here today, so we're recording. Hi, Maria, thank you for watching. Okay, you're certainly welcome to stay as we move forward. Also, recognize that you may have other places to be. Thank you so much.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, so then we'll move us to question period. Should we have any in the room? Eric?
No?
All right, I'll go for it with my remarks. And so I already shared that kids design the ads piece with you over. We're working for technical difficulties, so I'll just move right on. June began with B.C. Challenge Youth and Care Week. This important week was first declared in 2011 because a group of young advocates with lived experience wanted to find ways to address the social stigma they face for being in government care. They wanted to change the narrative that they were bad kids and create an opportunity to celebrate instead. We can all help raise social awareness and shift negative perceptions by learning about the realities facing young people in care, by listening to young people, respecting their voices and experiences, celebrating strengths, and connecting young people to weaknesses. School District Forty-seven continues to build and nurture a supportive community that stands with children and youth who have been or still are in care. There are many months in our school calendar, but to me, June feels the most jam-packed by far. Some activities or chapters of life for our students and their families are wrapping up for the year or coming to a close, while the anticipation, planning, and optimism for new or different opportunities brings revitalized energy and enthusiasm to whatever comes next. The excitement is evident in every school and creates a buzz throughout our community. Our first-ever district-wide conference for all grade sevens brought students together for a full day of learning and preparing for their transition to Brooks and into young adulthood. The day started with drumming from Drew Blaney, followed by a welcome and prayer from Tom and Elder John Louis. John noted that his words weren't about religion, but instead about spirituality. He spoke about our connection to the land and all that our community has to share. Mr. Louis spoke about how fortunate we are to be part of a progressive school district. He mentioned the Traditional Skill Builders Program and expressed gratitude for the variety and depth of opportunities provided to students now as compared to when he attended. It was wonderful to be in the room to witness two hundred people, young people, give their undivided attention to Mr. Louis and the other presenters throughout the day. Undivided with two hundred kids was really, you know, with a grain of salt. It was as good as it could get. There were a number of fantastic presentations, keynote speakers, and breakout sessions scheduled in the jam-packed day. It was my privilege to have the opportunity to listen in alongside our students to Dr. Lita Barcilo, who introduced her eights are great presentation. The title served as an acronym to guide her presentation as she delivered thoughtful advice on a variety of important topics. Dr. Barcilo helped students focus their listening on important, but not always prioritized, areas of good health, such as activities, sleep, routine, healthy foods, managing emotions, navigating friendships, and other relationships. Her presentation helped to strengthen student understanding of brain development and provided some great suggestions and tips to support success through high school in addition to good overall health and well-being throughout their lives. Students were encouraged to pursue their passions and explore interests while maintaining a healthy balance as they learn and grow. Another first for our district, a district parent advisory council, DEPAC, whose membership includes reps from the parent advisory committees from each school, brought forward an idea for a district-wide grade seven dance to provide another opportunity for grade seven students to connect in a social setting before starting their high school experience. Parent volunteers reported the event as a success, estimating a hundred and forty kids in attendance, including some from our smallest school community on Texada. The one-dollar concession was a hit. A parent from James Thompson collected some great photos of the event. Principals and parent volunteers helped with activities like glow-in-the-dark face painting and a photo booth, while grade seven students mixed, mingled, danced, and celebrated together. Included in my secondary school highlights this June, the Brooks music program, year-end junior and senior concerts were simply amazing. The kitchen sink band knocked it out of the park with their jazzy style and stage presence. The choir brilliantly performed in perfect harmony. A song titled Hunker Down was among their repertoire for the evening, a piece by Canadian composer with local ties, Tobin Stokes. It was my privilege to hear the piece twice this month. The first was at the District-wide Professional Development Day, a long-term employee recognition luncheon. But it was at the second time at the Brooks concert, where our talented Mr. Cummings provided commentary about where the entertaining and clearly local piece came from. You can enjoy the performance clip on the Brooks Secondary Facebook page. Mr. Cummings also explained that international and graduating students could be identified by the red flower into their outfits. Paul's words throughout the evening celebrated each of the students and their accomplishments. His care, commitment, and connection to the students shone through. At the end of the evening, students presented Mr. Cummings with a framed photo that they'd taken the time to personalize. Mr. Cummings appreciated their gesture and was admiring it while expressing his gratitude when one by one, students stepped forward off the pew they were standing on to place small rubber ducks on top of the frame to form a pile. Everyone was smiling and happy. I have no idea what the ducks were about, but it was a lovely heartfelt moment. Earlier this spring, many of our students were introduced to the cello, symphony orchestra, and classical music with maestro Arthur Arnold during the classroom portion visit of the Prisma for Kids program. In June, as a part of the program, students from across the district were invited to Evergreen Theater to see and hear a rehearsal of the full Prisma Festival Orchestra. The program closed out last night with an evening designed to experience the sights and sounds of classical music and a relaxed performance, especially curated for kids at the Prisma for Kids Free Family Friendly Concert. The local exhibition of musical talent doesn't stop there. Last year, we had a teacher retire from the classroom, but his love of music and community continued. Dave McMaster is busy building an incredible lineup and spearheading a summer rock and roll concert titled Rockin' the Beach. Save the date, Saturday, October fifth, 2023, also will be a free event. This June, our retirees were treated to an amazing multi-course meal catered by Chef Connor Knickerbocker and the Brooks Culinary Students. Not only was everything about the made-from-scratch meal absolutely top-notch perfection, but some students participated in the preparation, service, and cleanup, who are not even a part of the culinary program yet. They chose to contribute because of their love of the culinary classroom culture and the people, and I think that says more than words. I'd like to express gratitude again and thank you to them for providing such a wonderful dining experience for all of us. Coming up tomorrow night, we have awards night to acknowledge and celebrate students in grades eight to eleven on their academic, athletic, and fine arts achievements. The graduating class of 2023 has planned a parade, which will be taking place on Sunday, June 25th, at 11:00 a.m. And lastly, I mentioned to you already while Matt was presenting, I can't think of a better way to acknowledge National Indigenous Peoples' Day than sharing the following with you. I'm just gonna read out again what Matt had put together in his school with teacher Erin Hodgens. At the beginning of the school year, Henderson's grade three, four students created a land acknowledgement to help show their respect for Indigenous people and gratitude for living and learning in T-Swat, on Talaman territory. Teacher Erin Hodgens helped guide conversation and took notes, while students thoughtfully created the land acknowledgement to represent their appreciation for an entire year. The land acknowledgement was then displayed in their classroom and students took turns reciting it weekly and welcoming a guest into the classroom. In June, the students had the privilege of presenting the land acknowledgement to the Talaman Executive Council and Hagu's John Hackett. We live in T-Swat at Powell River on Talaman Territory. We work, play, explore, live, exercise, relax, and experience the world around us. In this place, we see the ocean, lake, forest, and a variety of plants and animals. We enjoy the sunset and sunrises over the mountains and oceans. We value the view from the mountains and over the ocean. This land provides food, water, and shelter for us. We also cherish the wisdom that the elders share with us. I would encourage everyone to visit the website and click on the link to hear that acknowledgement in student voice. It was absolutely a privilege to watch. As we wrap up this school year, I'd just like to say thank you to all of our staff. The work that each of them do every day to support our students and build community is appreciated, and today you've got a lovely snapshot of that. I'd also like to wish everyone a restful, safe, and enjoyable summer. Today, the first day of summer, the summer solstice, and the longest day of the year, so thank you. I know that was a long one, but like I said, June was jam-packed. Okay, so with that, let's move right to the agenda then. Looking for a motion that the regular meeting agenda of June 21 be adopted as circulated. Maureen moved, seconded by Christine. Christine, sorry, and we're keeping her awake. Okay, next, looking for a motion that the regular meeting minutes of May 17 be adopted as circulated. Moved by Jackson, seconded by Maureen. All in favor? Carried. Okay, record closed meetings. Board met on May 17 in camera. And then we'll move us right to the correspondence. We have a number of pieces of incoming correspondence. Any comments, questions, concerns around any of those? Okay. Looking for a motion then that correspondence listed from A to G be received. Mark, Christine moves, and seconded by Jackson. All in favor? Thank you. Outgoing correspondence, we've got a draft letter of support for Texada and reps for B.C. Carries. A pretty self-explanatory thing. I just want to say it's way more than what they're hoping for. It's a great letter. And then 5B, we've got Edge Health Students. You'll see that letter was crafted to go to each of the students, and I had a teacher from the class reach out and express gratitude for our response back to them, so that was lovely. And that being all for outgoing correspondence, we'll look for a motion then that the letter of support for Texada and reps for B.C. Carries sent out to the press. Maureen moves, seconded by Jackson. All in favor? Great. AJ, you?
Okay, a quick report just brought to you from the Wellness Committee here in the report. As we recall, we gave the Wellness Committee, we resourced them. It was a goal around trying to work on culture and bringing people together. And we had done various forms of that and then felt that we should actually have a committee and fund them, and they would figure out with the colleagues what they thought would bring people together. And so they've recorded back to you on the activities that have taken place this year and have learned from the things that they've done and kind of what people want to attend and want to attend. And put out a survey. put out a survey, and are, are looking to continue the work next year.
Do we have a sense from that survey of what parts are hit and what parts are missed?
Um, I, it's, we turned it, uh, uh, there.
It's quite a list, and some of those things, like, well, obviously, the comedian, I think that's a second go-around for that one, but the other things were all new this year, weren't they?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
They were, and some of them, yeah, were well-attended, and others, you could drop in, I knew you'd have some drop-in, maybe a chance or not, to, to go over, um,
as well as, yeah.
As well as others.
Yeah.
Seems like the one, one-time or couple-time events seem to be better than, um, the, the, the ones.
Yeah, well, they've done a fantastic job, that's quite, um, a final report for the year of activities on the side, yeah.
And then just my, um, suspension exclusion and security report.
So, nothing extraordinary in that. Okay, so Jay's short report this month, looking for a motion that the superintendent of schools report be received as presented, Jackson moves, seconded by Kirsten, all in favor? Thank you. Hi, let's do it.
Okay, I've got, uh, three ads in my report, and then, uh, break over here with a whole bunch of documents. So the first is the, uh, two thousand twenty-two, uh, climate change accountability report. This is here, uh, just for your information, uh, being carbon neutral is a, a requirement of, um, school districts. And this report is, uh, submitted each, each day as part of that requirement, and it follows a bit of a, a framework with our own global context, or what, um, a little bit of actions and plans, uh, basically that narrative ties to outline what the school district has, has done in the, in the previous year related to, um, goals around, um, sustainability, and in this context, specific to reducing our, our footprint and corresponding utility costs, and then lays out, uh, some plans for, for coming years, and then also includes some more holistic pieces that are not necessarily to, to, uh, capital. And then it also summarizes, um, the technical pieces, is what our emissions were, and then by paying, um, within that structure, by paying, uh, in this case, the, the offset investment for this year of twenty-two thousand one hundred, and then with that criteria makes us carbon neutral. So I conclude this, uh, every June after we made it in, just for your information. So, questions? Um, then next is my regular monthly, um, budget actual, uh, as in most years, I guess a bit messy towards the e- end of the year as, as you're winding down most of your spending. There's a few pockets of service and supply stuff, and, uh, mostly both in, in maintenance and in transportation where, where we, uh, increase spending by design, getting a job on, on some things for, for next year, recognizing we, we have room within the budget to carry those out, uh, and specifically maintenance, we're, we're coming up to a pretty aggressive year tied to, uh, some of the stuff that, um, Ms. Kennedy was alluding to, so getting a jump on that with, um, with that spring was important. And the last is the, uh, capital plan overview. So here, it's, it's an outline, um, for the whole year, of what you'll be doing with the resolution as endorsing our application under the, the first three pieces, or four pieces, the expansion program, seismic, um, school food infrastructure, and the balance, uh, we'll come back to in September, uh, as it's got a September deadline. I've, um, laid out what we expect to do, but we haven't completed the, the planning when it comes to those, uh, the September prepared for with initiatives that we started, uh, last year and are in place this summer, so, um, this year, we, we undertaking how we do lighting upgrades at Kelly Creek and James Thompson with a mechanical ventilation upgrade at James Thompson, and we expect to carry that work through my, my application into, to other schools. Um, specifically at this, this point, you're, you're, you'd be adopting, uh, what we call major capital. The most relevant here is the expansion program at Edcho, that's been, um, in our plan for a number of years, but as, as you know, this spring is part of the capital plan response letter. We, uh, got permission from the ministry to move to that next, uh, phase in planning. And although, uh, we've been working closely with the prin- principal and, um, uh, some consultants, we're, I would stop short of, of saying that it's not a core equation, but we're very, we feel, feel strongly that, that, that climate moving forward will be, will be supported. Um, and, uh, hopefully, in September, we can share those, um, drawings with, with staff. Uh, if it is to, to proceed in the, in the, uh, way that we're planning, Edcho would see, uh, a new gymnasium, and it would see five new classrooms, two of which are, are, um, kindergarten, the existing strong start, or the existing kindergarten would become a strong start, and most of the development would basically be going from, if you're facing a school in a covered area, um, to the right. And suppose that classroom block would basically create a bit of a primary link at that end, multipurpose in the middle, potentially at, at our side. Uh, so we're, we're hopeful that it'll be, be supported and, and, uh, anticipate bringing, kind of, more information back in September. The seismic, um, for us, the, the, the one remaining priority is, is tied to Texada, and it's really tied to it being a multi-story building, and, and that's constructed on bedrock, so there's, um, improvements that, that can be made, and this, uh, project did, um, works for a couple of years. We do have ministry staff, uh, planning to visit in the summer to look at both Edcho and what we're going over with Texada. And then last, with the school food infrastructure program, the capital intake is tied to this near the futures program, so we anticipate, um, applying for, uh, appliance upgrades in most of our, our schools, higher-speed dishwashers, so you can, can turn over open practice at, at a lunch program, and some kitchens, some small ventilation upgrades. And, uh, we will have that fleshed out by the June twenty-ninth deadline. That estimate of seventeen thousand is already at twenty-four, it's almost more. Generally, what we're looking to is, for you, by way of motion that is scripted on the, on the cover is to endorse our submission of the, the first piece of the plan, we'll bring the, the balance back in, uh, September.
Let's do that, it's definitely some very exciting developments, um, I think maybe even the biggest project since I've been around this board table, if it should be approved or if it's.
It'll, it'll be the, the, since, uh, we opened Westview with our campus in Brooks, yeah.
Exciting, okay, any questions for Steve? Yep, okay, so then we're looking for two motions, and Steve's report, the first being that the Secretary of Treasuries report be received as presented. Jackson moves, Rob second, all in favor? Great, and that the twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five major projects be approved as presented, and Jackson and Rob again. Thank you.
Next, and we ran into, to work that was mostly, um, supportive of the committee of the whole and other motions to follow. Uh, I, I did present the, the budget summary of the committee of the whole, it's included again here, but it's been updated to reflect, uh, decisions made since, since last week tied to the strategic plan, so if you look, look closely, the, the five priorities are now six, and the, uh, some of the preamble, mission, mission, um, fact, your statements are included in that document. But when it comes to the, the formal budget documents, um, I'll just give a quick high-level summary of, of those, and I'll skip over, um, the first few statements to the schedules. Schedule two A specifically lays out, um, our anticipated revenue, most of which, of course, is coming from the Ministry of Education and Childcare. And this summary aligns to the one that's in, uh, the planning document we shared last week. The, uh, schedule two B, uh, lays out similarly, um, that same, uh, the spending plan, and then lays it out tied to various, um, staffing groups and various components of services apply. We're in three point four two million in spending. Schedule two C is taking that same spending and laying it out by group, or function, or program. Functions are instruction, administration, operations, and transportation, and then within those functions are, um, the various programs.